Hey, how you doing, Rob? How many did you kill the other day? When you played Red Laser Tag with, uh...
I was gonna do it, but I thought, there's no reason to demonstrate to everyone what lamentable lack of motor skills actually. I'm gonna go in there and do better than people with actual training? Probably not.
How did Carton do?
She started on... She left. When you're all done. Oh, please, sir. The bed at the end.
Oh, that was the play.
There you go. That's funny.
Sir, I beg your pardon, but...
I need the freedom to go where... Fight Europe for my...
Oh, man.
You don't need that trip.
Who's fault he do it when he can? My fault he did it was this morning.
Yeah, I just discovered, uh, it's a really bad idea to take like your knee and drive into something that would move.
Yeah, figuring that out. You know, where is spice? And then this one's a cannabis for it, so...
I hope I didn't just make my own fantasy here.
Where'd you go on vacation?
There's so many of you. Do I get a paycheck now? Where'd I go? Here?
Uh, no, I thought you took a vaca...
Oh, yeah, I didn't go anywhere. Farthest I went is Rockford.
He did the steak.
Wow. Rockford.
I know.
They got everyone off at ninety seconds.
Yeah.
One of my eight...
Yeah, I thought you made me...
Whatever I feel that way, they know that a call for insurance is a little expensive, what I need speeded to.
We evacuated one set over there.
Oh, man. The only...
Well, this is like a simulator.
Oh, yeah.
The security put out to slide.
Oh, really? Oh, wow.
Now, she froze at the...
Depends on what kind of pissy man.
As she was trained to do. What up behind her, when you buckle her knees.
Well...
But she bounced off the slide.
That's the way you see.
It had first, so killed her on the spot.
But she will be here, she was sending me...
They changed that. You mentioned the night.
Oh, Alicia, yeah.
She was sending me... Tech messages. And I finally said, no, I said, I don't have...
That's the thing I heard about that, that ninety seconds or the certification and all that is based on people that are very motivated to make sure that... You know, that airline employer...
We had a couple of guys. Yeah, it's all. Everything, everything. But. That was. Yes. Oh, yeah. They have come to. They don't want. Yeah. So. Yeah. One night you go to the. It's like. I'm. Which is. Right. Things. My. My. You know. Yeah. Speaking of here. Brother, that's you. Thank you. Audience. And. Okay, that's one thirty. There's all meetings. All right. Believe us. Please. What do we do? The United States of America. And to the Republic of America's Dance. Why nation? Not your God. And if this all. We're bringing to us. So. One call, please. Mr. Darney.
Here.
Mrs. Darney.
Here.
And Thorn.
Here.
Yes, Bo.
Here.
We've got five trustees in attendance. We've got a forum. We've got a meeting. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Moved by harm, seconded by Thor and approved the minutes of December tw- eighteenth. Any pronding or any additions or deletions? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion so carries. If you will. Okay, moving to the president's report. First off is the civility pledge. Mr. Harn, did you read that for us this week?
In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we may each have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, the president's report. Couple of things I want to touch on real quick this evening. And the first has been the thing that's been in the news a lot, and that is the immigration situation where transports are being sent from the southern cities to the northern cities without any notice with migrants in them. While the village of Sleepy Hollow does not have access to a train station or a bus station, we do have the ability to respond should a situation occur within our boundaries. Both the chief and myself have attended a webinar this past ten days on the migrant situation. The chief has the three phone numbers. I have the three phone numbers of the emergency, Office of Emergency Management, which would be the first to respond for us. And we would give them a call and they would get the buses. The county sheriff already has deputies set aside and ready on call. He's got access to buses. So if something should happen within the village of Sleepy Hollow, we've got some resources that we can fall back on. Now, just if anybody was concerned, they said, we really don't expect it unless they decide to get really nasty and just drop people off in a church parking lot or a shopping lot parking lot. At this point, we haven't seen that. But if that wouldn't happen in our neighborhood, as the chief and I both got the phone numbers and we'd be on the Office of Emergency Management, the Kane County Sheriff's, and Kane County Health Department immediately. So from that aspect, you know, I think they're pretty well prepared as we're going to be. It's. Uh, the other item this evening is the adjudication, administrative adjudication we talked about a couple of weeks ago. We have had a meeting, the chief and Mrs. Detmer and the clerk and Eugene Van and myself. We're looking into that. The chief is getting the information we need from his aspect. Mrs. Detmer is getting the information from her aspect on it. And they've got Mr. Black advised in this. And sometime now we're back from the holidays and the vacation, in the next couple of weeks, we'll start looking at it together moving forward on this. Uh, the other item is, uh, the Chicago Metropolitan Area for Planning, also referred to as CMAP, offers a lot of technical assistance to municipalities. And I'm going to be talking to them. First off, I was thinking about our strategic planning, and we might be able to utilize CMAP in that. But CMAP has said that that's not one of their priorities right now. One of their big things now is capital infrastructure. And we've got a capital infrastructure plan coming up with water mains of services that we plan on replacing here in the next six months to a year. And so I'll be reaching out to CMAP along with getting Mr. Steel involved and Mr. Van so we can see what, you know, might be available on their systems to help us get some vans from the state on this. So, you know, we'll move forward on that. They do have a call for projects in February of this year, so we've only got about eight weeks to get that all put together and move forward with them on that. Uh, so the administrative adjudication that we talked, oh, I just said that was on that and we'll be moving on that. Okay, that's one, two, three, four, five. And we're into the first report. I have nothing here, Park, but would you like to advance the agenda to the citizens of. Oh, we could do that if you would like.
I'd love it.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to move up the introduction of Officer Kyle Davis to the present time.
So moved by Dan, we seconded by Thor to amend the agenda to move section twelve D to the present. Any comments, questions, or discussion on it? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There we go, the introduction of Kyle Davis.
Last December, we swore Kyle in as a part-time officer, and we started the academy in March of this year and just completed nine months of the part-time police academy. Did very well. The reports we got were great. I'll attend his actual formal graduation on Saturday. So I just wanted to introduce everybody to Kyle and present him with his State of Illinois certificate. So you can actually wear a badge. Welcome to board. That's what you said.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations. And yes, the officers keep getting younger and younger.
Doesn't seem that way, does it? Okay, that takes care of item I and the D. So we're back to planning and zoning. And no report, Mrs. Denton, thank you. Attorney's report.
No report tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Engineers report.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Stew. Director of Finance.
Requesting motion for the approval of the warrants in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Bo to approve the warrants of January second, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and point six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? There being none, all call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Ms. Keharni.
Aye.
Mrs. Dyer.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne votes, no negative votes, and margin so carries, if you will. Thank you. Comments from the public? Has anyone signed up this evening? Dino Martinez.
Yes, sir. I was just, you know, talking about the, what is it, administration adjudication? I feel like if it's, uh, almost, you, you, it's not like somebody else looking at it fresh, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, I feel like it would be too, like, segregated, you know? It's like it would only be your eyes. I wouldn't be able to go nowhere. Whatever you decide, that would be it. You know, if it's really a problem, you know? That's how I feel. I feel like, you know, the other week we were here, I got my pass for two, for two times for no reason, you know? So I just feel like it's a little bit biased. I don't know, that's the way I feel. You know, I make phone calls, nobody calls back and stuff like that, you know? I don't know, I just don't think it's a good idea. Just for the fact that, you know, that it would be like, I can't go to somebody else because right away you're gonna say, oh, no, I'm done. There's no other eyes looking into it, you know, fresh eyes. You know, that's what I think. I think it's a bad idea.
There you go. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, returning to the agenda, trustees' reports, roads and parks, Mr. Harn.
Um, nothing new in roads and parks. Since I have the floor, I would like to thank the chief and the police department for, again, making the simulator available to the trustees. Trustee Bo and I happened to be scheduled at the same time. I would never want to meet Trustee Bo in an alley when we're both on.
It was fun.
That's a real eye opener, what the officers could experience any day on their job. I think Trustee Bo would agree to that. I thank you again for the invitation. Nothing good or regret.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, finance, Mr. Horn, Thorn.
No report.
Thank you, Mark. Warren Sorensen, Bo.
Um, really quickly, so Wendy O'Neill emailed me the other day, since we have installed the wastewater meters on the, for ten of the fifteen residents, we've noted that the estimation we used to have of using six thousand gallons a month and creating the flat rate fee of seventy-five dollars, which it's been for some time, is actually under the usage rate. So we're discussing raising it to a hundred dollar flat rate for the four remaining residents who are still on flat rate meters. And now that we're past the holidays, I will get back to her and we will get that squared away.
What is the timeline on these four remaining meters to be installed?
I do not know that. But I'll be meeting, I'm, I'm hoping with, after the holidays, with people being back, I'd like to actually sit down and meet with all four of them. I know they're right within one another, I think next door neighbors, and just kind of help them understand our incorrect estimates from before, what the reality is, and that they've been getting quite a deal beforehand, and we really just need to reconcile the differences at this point. Secondly, I also enjoyed going to the firearms simulator. It was, Ed wasn't lying, like, the second you get there, my hands just started sweating just from natural anxiety, not knowing what to anticipate. The video from it was kind of old school, some from the eighties and nineties, but it was, I mean, it was enlightening. And Officer Joe Stegman was one who ran us through the drills. And what I appreciated was he kind of explained they had, it's kind of like, choose your own adventure. He could change the outcome of it. And here you are just looking at a screen and you've got Ed sitting behind me and the officer sitting behind me, and I have to, like, tell this guy to set down the baby or put down the machete, and it just, it was an interesting scenario, so. I don't think we have too many babies and machetes in Sleepy Hollow, but the idea of, like, walking around and encountering people, they had some very true-to-life scenarios to go through. So, thanks, officers. And that's all from Water and Switch.
All right. Go ahead, Department. Police and Public Safety, Mr. Dattley.
Uh, no report, too many.
Steve. Oh, Buildings and Environment. All right.
I have no report.
Building and drawing enforcement. Kelly, am I here this evening? Okay. Uh, Old Business, ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-four dash one, amending the pilot permit of the Building Regulations, Chapter one, Code seven, twenty-nine.
President, you have in the package any draft ordinance? Mr. Mills, I'll remind you that this calls for publication in pamphlet form, so want to hang that up tomorrow. It'll take effect, uh, January thirteenth, uh, being in effect, uh, ten days after the date of passage, tonight. What it does is take away an amendment that had been made to the swimming pool regulations published by the International Code Council, um, so that safety covers would be allowed in the village for us. Discuss in November and December, and here it is, ready to go.
Do you need a motion? I, I'm, I'm moved.
Second, Dattley.
Moved by McGuire, seconded by Dattley, per vantage twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash one. Comments, questions, or discussion?
I have a question. So I, I don't know how many outstanding permit requests there are for something like this. Uh, I know the Martinez's do it, but is this going to be retroactive then?
No.
No. So they have to go through this all again?
There's no. They have to comply with the fence.
They didn't have a conforming application the last time we talked, or they?
They had an application in with the information about fence that they could install, but they asked to have that waived and not put it in fence.
Right.
So they had the information available for the fence, should be denied, and so I could not, under their request for modification, approve that because it would lower the level of safety.
Right.
And so I went ahead and gave it to the board, basically in an appeal process, then realizing that technically because it would lower the level of safety again, it was not an appealable, uh, project.
Right, so that application stands denied. Right?
The request for not having the fence that is included in the packet is denied.
Okay.
They did apply for a fence permit, and the fence information that was provided would be acceptable.
So what's, what's our next step? Is that what you're kind of asking?
They have to, um, go through the process of, of rescinding their application and paying the fees. They're part of the, uh, terminating a permit prior to issuance of the permit and plan review fees, and then reapplying under this.
After January thirteenth.
Correct.
When it takes place.
Um, really quickly, I just want to check, I understand the procedures, but so we're, even though we're charging them to resend their permit?
It's in the code.
Okay, I'm just, but I'm just making, even though we, I feel like, aren't we the ones who've been delaying the whole thing? Oh, because their permit before was asking with respect to having a, where they would have a fence.
Right. They asked for a modification.
Yeah.
Which a power official can approve a modification as long as these states, the drawings would be reduced eighty-three percent if people had consented, especially for children five and under. The, um, DCFS for the State of Illinois also recommends a four-side attempt with self-closing gates, it's reducing drawings, everything. Consumer Product Safety Commission, national safety organizations, and as you know, the Center for Disease Control Convention is the one that tracks deaths nationwide and comes up with the statistics. And so removing a non-safety function by taking out the higher standard that was incorporated under twenty-one, twenty-one dash fifteen, where we took out allowing safety covers to stand on their own, would be reducing the level of safety, and it's kind of like having, um, as someone so clearly stated, it's like having a belt and suspenders. It's like having your seatbelt, the National Highway Safety and Transportation, you have the lines going off in your car if you don't buckle your seatbelt. It's redundancy, redundancy. The aircraft that just was hit in Japan, every single person, passenger got off of that plane because of redundancies in safety processes and improvements. So that's why looking for redundancy and maintaining the extra level of safety would be my encouragement, again, to vote no on this and to allow fence requirements to stand in addition to the safety covers.
So if they, if they, we pass this, and then January thirteenth, they rescind their application and then put a new application in, are you still going to be fighting them on this?
If you pass it, they will have to pay.
Get approved.
They will have to pay the fees, they will have to finish filling out and completing the contract for services that has not been completed yet. They paid the escrow, but they didn't complete that portion of it. So they'll have to complete that. They'll still have to get the proper information for not only the pool, but the cover and all of the other requirements that go along with issuing permit. As their permit application stands right now, I cannot approve it because they do not have the information that's necessary. The pool company, the last time I talked to them, was working on getting the additional information that's required just for the pool itself, much less the fence.
We're not approving their requests for cover tonight. We are changing the ordinance to be allowed for. They have to withdraw the prior application and resubmit after a day, after this has been approved.
Makes sense.
After.
And the reminder is, this is not just for them. You will be affecting all residences, so out in the park areas, anybody that has open green space right behind them that has a possibility of children running, it's a visual barrier. It's, it's the second stopping point to remind, and also to hopefully, um, should that, uh, power cover ever be forgotten because if somebody decides to run into the house quickly and leaves the pool unattended and uncovered, it doesn't just automatically retract, it has to be actually done. So if somebody fails to do that, they no longer have a clearing off there. Whereas with the fence, self-closing gates, there's at least some barrier there to try and, and warn somebody like the road cones or something like that, that there's something there to be watched for.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? There being none, roll call, please. Uh, Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Ms. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Harn.
Aye.
Five, three, votes, no, now I get a vote margin so carries, if you will. Okay, more old business to go through, new business. Now, we need for new business this evening?
I move re-adjourned.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. It's all chief. Yeah. 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 My, my, sorry, I, I can't. Get the mask, yeah. 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 Yeah.